All right, are we ready to start?
Just a minute.
Okay.
Round side, what you want?
So have you got moved yet?
Me?
Yes.
Good.
Yep, I'll let her down because it's been good.
That makes it good.
It has been really, really good. Yep.
Moving down.
She's moving down.
Oh, good.
Yep. But he's a block.
Really?
Ready to roll? All right, Mr. Heath, I think we've got everybody, we're ready to go.
Okay then, good evening everyone, welcome to the July 15th meeting of the Martin County Board of Education. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray.
Is Mr. Baker there tonight?
I'm here, I got you. Let's pray, y'all. Father God, thank you so much for this opportunity to come together and discuss the business of our schools. Father, please guide our thoughts and our minds tonight and help us to make the right decisions and all that are best for our county and for our students. For this, we pray in your son's name.
Amen.
Amen.
All right, thank you, Mr. Baker. All right, we need a motion for approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you, we'll move on to recognitions, Ms. Stalls.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we're going to recognize a special group of individuals who stay behind the scenes quite a bit. We'll ask the Martin County Schools Transportation Team to come up. The Martin County Schools Transportation Department is home to some of our district's unsung heroes. Tonight, we are here to celebrate this team, which impacts, their work impacts the entire district. Being one person down did not stop this team from making incredible progress this year in the area of inspections. Among their numerous responsibilities, the team participates in an annual DPI bus inspection conducted by a third party. The inspection, the inspection looks at 10% of each of the district's fleet, buses in the fleet, performing the same 30-day inspection required by staff. The inspection also spot checks school bus inspections, maintenance files, and other reporting, fuel records, bus driver sign-in forms, and much, much more. Service trucks, fuel, pickup fuel, and records can also be inspected for safety and maintenance compliance. Now, keep in mind, when we talk about scores here, lower is better. This indicates fewer deficits found during the inspection. And Doug, if you'll change that for me, thank you. During the 23-24 review for the buses, 10%, of Martin County Schools bus fleet, excuse me, it was four buses, they received a 21.75. This is coming down from last year's 45.25. And if you'll see on the screen, the average score for the Eastern Region LEAs was 33.94. This year, our score showed tremendous improvement, and again, a man down, and they made such strides. So, we want to thank our team, you guys are amazing, and we want to thank you for everything you do, but especially on these numbers, you are really representing and doing well for the children of the district. Because when it comes back to you, the safety is in your hands, of the buses, and we thank you. So we want to congratulate our team, which includes Mr. Brian Wiggins, Transportation Supervisor and Shot Foreman, Mr. Donal Harvey, Mechanic, Mr. Floyd Bazemore, Fuel Truck Driver and Mechanic, Ms. Shanika Willoughby, TMS Coordinator, and a whole lot more, and Ms. Cynthia Mouring, our Leader of the Martin County Schools Transportation Department. So, let's give this group a big hand. I'll ever catch y'all together, so. Got it, thank you. All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kim Lilly for one more recognition tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. So we wanted to recognize our teachers for their completion of letters. You may be familiar with that term. Two years, well, actually, in April of 2021, legislation came out that said teachers need to participate in Science of Reading professional development. So we had 62 teachers just recently complete their two years. So, we know that they're out enjoying summer right now, but we did want to recognize them. Part of this two-year process for them, they participated in professional learning modules. They watched videos, they read content on phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, comprehension in writing. They also had these bridge-to-practice tasks where they had to work with individual students. So actually, they learned the content, and then they had to apply the practices with their own students in their classroom. So anyway, we just want to congratulate them for their completion of this professional development experience. We also, it's going to be a continuing, ongoing process when we have new teachers come in that are new hires, and also some students, or sorry, teachers that come out of education in the colleges. Colleges will start to implement this practice in the professional development, but right now, we've got about eight new folks that started last year, and then this year, we'll have a new oncoming group of people too. So, we did want to just recognize them, and so if you see them around, tell them thank you, because it's a really good professional development, but it's about 80 hours of work that they put into it, so we just wanted to tell them thank you.
All righty, next up is the superintendent's report.
Thank you so much, Chairman Heath. All right, we have had, or are having, a busy summer, full of amazing opportunities for our students. People often say, oh, during the summer, you know, you take a break and take a breath, but I think it's busier in the school system right now, even than when the children are here, because we are gearing up for a spectacular next school year. So, first of all, we have more camps going on in Martin County Schools than we have ever had before. One of the things, some of the feedback that we got from our parents was that they wanted more opportunities for children during the summer months. They wanted more learning fun, and so that's something we really focused on this summer, and it has not disappointed. Here, you can see, we've just completed our animal science camp. This was for rising eighth and ninth graders. Students learned proper small animal and livestock care. We used our very own animals right here at the IC, and they also visited the equine program at Martin Community College. They made ice cream, and they are eager to join our FFA program as we are working to expand those opportunities. We've held a summer trades camp that has been absolutely phenomenal. Our students have went different places, including Martin Community College. Special shout-out to them, and thank you for hosting our students. They've done a wonderful job, they actually visited there to learn more about auto mechanics, advanced manufacturing, welding, so many HVAC, hands-on opportunities for our students to really get a feel for some of the things they would have to do in these careers, and figure out if that's something they might be interested in, in the future. They also went to Beaufort Community College and visited their boat building and engineering program there. Lots of hands-on opportunities for these students, and it has been a spectacular experience where we're bringing our career and technical opportunities to life for these students. Our innovative middle school had a phenomenal camp. Everything from canvas painting to going and actually learning about the steam process through roller skating, theater games, doodle bots, flying drones, engineering. We even went to East Carolina University, our partners in our innovative middle school, and visited their technology center there, did some special projects. They even made some special innovative middle school t-shirts for our students. It was a wonderful experience, full steam ahead with our amazing innovative middle school program in the fall. We hosted an AIG camp where students were engaged in several exciting activities. They built their own putt-putt course to code. They also built spirals, constructed ping-pong catapults to test angles and trajectories, and designed their own kites that they then went to the beach and actually flew at Jockeys Ridge. So many amazing opportunities. We're currently hosting our Read to Achieve Summer Camp. It's located at both South Creek Elementary and EJ Hayes. Students will be there for 12 instructional days, completely focused on literacy. This is designed to give our kids a jumpstart, an extra boost, really focus on intensively growing our reading strategies. We have about 110 students who were invited, and students are going to receive 72 extra instructional hours of literacy, and that is going great. Want to say a special thank you to Farm Bureau. Their Future Farmers of America, our Future Farmers of America chapter received a special gift from them this week, as well as from Blue Cross. Amy Edwards, the manager, actually brought the check out to Carly Patterson this week and presented it to our FFA chapter. They will be used to support the special activities and wonderful things that our FFA chapter does. Also, wanted to introduce to you our new basketball coach. Antonio Davis has taken the court with our students. Mr. Davis is basically a legend, and has coached college basketball across the country. He has more than 20 years of head coaching experience and 32 years of coaching experience at all, overall. He's known as a disciplinarian, a master teacher, a motivator, and he believes in a family atmosphere. We are so excited to have him in Martin County Schools and are looking for huge, huge things from our basketball team this year. We also announced our new soccer coach, who is a Riverside alumni. We're super excited that Louis Castaneda will lead the Martin County High School Soccer Team as head coach this fall. He was a 2018 Riverside graduate and a member of the soccer team. He's also been an assistant coach for the past five years, so so excited to have him join as our new head soccer coach. Weeks Hughes will be coaching our cross-country team. Ms. Hughes has already began her workouts this year. She is a former, a retired English teacher from South Creek High School, and she is excited to be coaching the team this fall. Also, Amy Bennett, our very own Technology Director, will be leading our volleyball team this year. She has much coaching experience and says she is thrilled to be back to coaching alongside Jesse Dickerson, who's a media coordinator at Jamesville Elementary School, who will be her assistant coach. We have a super talented group of girls, reports Ms. Bennett, and we're looking to a promising season. We were, we are very excited tonight that two of our teachers were selected for the William Friday Retreat. Amy Bursanti and Haley Bonds are both teachers at Jamesville Elementary School, and they applied and were selected to attend this amazing event. It's focused on enriching the mind and rejuvenating the spirit down east. It was held June 23rd through 25th in Beaufort County. Check up our, check out our Facebook page to learn more about this special event. So proud of these teachers for going above and beyond to take on these special opportunities and bring them back to our students in the classroom. Martin County Schools was featured on the North Carolina School Boards Association website as the Public School Win of the Week. This week's Public School Win of the Week celebrates two exceptional teachers, Landon Leggett from Riverside Middle School and Mary Taylor Connor from Jamesville Elementary School. These teachers traveled abroad with Go Global North Carolina. These teachers actually went abroad to learn specific things, actually, a huge steam focus that are going to be coming back to our innovative middle school. We're so excited of the dedication of these teachers and can't wait to hear more about their experience. We were also visited this month by the Tar Heel teachers on the road. Mr. Matthew Artis actually visited us and selected Martin County as a school to visit, came here to the Innovation Campus and held a special interview. We were one of only school, two school districts in the state that he's elected for an on-the-road visit this summer. So, it was a wonderful opportunity to sit down with him and talk about all the amazing things happening in Martin County Schools. Special thanks to him for visiting with us. We held our leadership retreat over the past week. We spent three days together with all leaders in Martin County Schools. Our theme was Flight 24-25. We believe we can fly, get on board and buckle up, because new heights here we come. We were very focused on data. This room was filled with analytical charts from across our school system, really digging in and figuring out what we can do to better our best next year. I'm going to tell you, we are truly blessed with some of the best administrators anywhere. We have a phenomenal team, and the best is yet to come for Martin County Schools. I want to end today by giving a special shout-out to our custodians and our maintenance teams. Over the summer, again, many people think that's when the school systems are in break mode, but I'm here to tell you that the work is ongoing and it is intense. These folks are working very long hours, and they are making sure that our buildings are thoroughly cleaned and repaired and ready to go for next school year. So I just want to take a moment to say thank you, thank you, thank you times a million to all of our custodians and our maintenance staff. Your work is noticed, you are so valued and you're so appreciated. We cannot do what we do in educating our children and giving them the best without everything that you're doing right now, so thank you. They're out there in the heat, they're working on our buildings, they're making sure that we are ready to go for a phenomenal school year. So I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you to all of our custodians and maintenance staff, you're making a positive difference, and you are appreciated. That concludes my superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Dr. White. All right, Mr. Barber, let's hear about our school nutrition bids.
Good evening, boards, great to see everyone, as always. So tonight, I come to you to seek approval for the 24-25 school nutrition bid. So we do this every single year, this is a normal process. And just some reminders, so Martin County Schools does, we are a member of the Northeastern North Carolina Co-op, and that is made up of 13 counties in the northeastern part of North Carolina. And by being a member of that, we put our usages together to get more purchasing power, which in turn gives some of our smaller districts, Martin County included, a lower bid price. So, our distributor bid, which includes lots one groceries, lot three supplies, and lot four produce, are all put out as a unit with that Northeastern North Carolina Co-op. Milk is put out independently by Martin County Schools, and we're looking for the bottom line, the lowest bottom line price there. So this chart here goes through each of our bids. So, for lot one, lot three, and lot four, it is my recommendation that we go with Cisco Hampton Roads. That is going to be a bid renewal. Renewals are always a good thing, because as we know, the chances of prices going down are not very good these days, so a good steady price from what we've had in the past is always a good thing. Don't focus on that bottom line price. Those large numbers are going to be the bottom line totals for all 13 counties in that co-op. What I want you to focus on is a fixed case fee. So that's what that distributor is putting a bid out for, is that fixed case fee. That fee includes the price and the cost for our distributor to bring products in for us, to house those products, deliver those products, and then provide the customer service with all that that goes on there. So for lot one, 275, again, that's a renewal, lot three, 195, and lot four, 275. For our milk bid, I want you to look at the price per carton, and I know that number looks a little silly, .3125. The way milk producers put bids out, they go to the fourth decimal in terms of price. So again, that is also a renewal, that bottom line price, I do want you to focus on that, is $182,812.50. Again, also a bid renewal, which is a very, very good thing for the school nutrition department, as we are again battling to remain sustainable and to really dive into our financials. So, my recommendation, I ask for your approval for those, for the, for the bids for our distributor, as well as our milk, to carry us into the 24-25 school year, so we continue to feed our kids. Any questions? It's just up for approval.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the 2024-2025 school nutrition bids.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bids as presented by Mr. Barber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Barber.
Thank you, board, good to see everyone. Thank y'all.
Mr. Andrea Lilly, Policy Revisions, Third Reading.
Good evening. I'd like to come to you tonight to present to you the remainder of the 2000 series, and specifically, that is 23-21 through 26-70, and this is for third read and approval. I'd like to ask if you have any questions at this time? And like to ask for approval.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the policies 23-21 through 26-70.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the third reading, the policy revisions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Lilly.
Thank you.
Dr. White?
Thank you, Chairman Heath. Yes, thank you, Chairman Heath. Board members, in your packet, you have our proposed Board of Education meeting schedule for the 24-25 school year. And we are looking for your approval for these minute, for these, for this meeting schedule tonight. They're in our, they were sent out in the actual packet. Does anybody need to refer to a copy before? Any questions about the meeting schedule, or, and they're on your screen as well?
It's really nothing different, right?
It isn't.
It's just a meeting and a work session if needed.
Yep, same procedure as last year, a meeting, a work session if needed. On the months with holidays, it's difficult to get into meetings, because they would be back-to-back, so that's where you see the not applicable due to those. So we basically, we follow the same procedure that we've been following with the new calendar.
Okay, the schedule looks good to me, so is there a motion?
I move to approve the 2024-2025 board meeting schedule.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 24-25 board meeting schedule. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you, thank you, Dr. White. All right, the next item on our agenda is the District Two Board Seat Interviews. Good evening, Mr. McPherson.
Good evening, board, how are you?
Good evening.
Good.
All right. At our last meeting, the board elected to advertise for the vacancy of seat two. Included in your packet is the application of one candidate at this time. My understanding is that candidate's going to come forward, and the board's going to interview that candidate. As a reminder, if you have any questions for this candidate, those questions need to be asked during open session, okay? Any questions for me before we get started? I would ask Ms. Pat Nelson to come forward.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, I have a statement I'd like to read for the people that are behind me. I know I'm being interviewed, but they don't have the information you have, so I think maybe they might need to hear some of my qualifications that may not be in the questions that you asked me. Do you have a problem with that?
No ma'am, go right ahead.
Okay. Being a board member requires making decisions for my community, and I have experience doing that while serving on the zoning board in Robertsonville as a trustee in my church, and as president of Beta Opsalon Chapter of Delta Kappa Gamma Society of Women Educators, as a Greenville District Executive for United Methodist Women, and I also currently serve on the United Methodist Church's Bishop's Task Force on Gun Safety. Making decisions for our school system involves evidence-based data, particularly when looking at success rates of new programs. It also requires admitting when something's not working and revisiting that program. Admitting when we're wrong is something I believe in strongly. None of us is always right. Sometimes we misjudge with good intentions. Instead of getting defensive, we should talk things out and admit if we made a decision that might not work the way we thought it would. We must work together as a board, and if we sometimes disagree, that's okay. We don't have to agree on everything, but compromise can be a good thing. If our politicians could do more of that, we'd get more done. You all seem to work together very well. I enjoy attending the meetings, I think all of you have this county at heart, and so do I. I want you to know that about me. Working with budget is an important part of serving on a Board of Education, and I have experience with serving on finance committees at my church, as well as being in charge of tens of thousands of dollars with reading first budget at Winston Primary School for six years. Watching news clips and keeping up with current legislation is something that I do as a former teacher. I am still concerned about education in our state and with the teachers that are in our county. I've even been to Raleigh a couple of times and talked to legislators myself. A priority for the county with demographics such as ours is funding, I understand that about our county. I know that we don't have a lot of extra money, but I think you all do a good job with what you have in serving our children, and I commend you for that. It's my intention to follow through with that, if I have the opportunity. There are many grants that go to waste each year, and I think our county benefits from many grants, but there are probably more that we don't know about that we could probably find out about. I'm currently talking with a former student of mine about getting some STEM money from a program at Harvard and MIT. Another aspect of board membership is understanding the workings of the Department of Public Construction, and I have worked with the Department of Construction on several occasions, determining textbooks for counties to look at by looking at research-based data on each series, and then sending the LEAs three textbooks to choose from. Leadership is one of the main roles as a board member, and I have served in leadership roles in my church, my school, my district, my community. I chaired the school improvement team at Edna Andrews several times, I served on three different teams for the Southern Association of Schools and Colleges to do accreditation visits for other schools in other counties. And if appointed, I want you to know that I have no personal agenda. I know you don't know me, but I'm not the kind of person that has an agenda that's political. This is not about politics to me, this is about the children in Martin County. The politics aside, that doesn't matter to me. We work for the children of Martin County. If I get an opportunity, that's what I will do. Abiding by legal guidelines is also important. I've been looking at things online already about what a board does and what's legal, what's not legal. I think it's very important for us to look into those matters and make sure that we're following all the guidelines set forth by the legislature's laws. I want you to know that I consider myself a person of integrity because of my Christian faith and values and facing serious health issues in the past. I believe that what life I have left, I don't mind telling you, I'm 68 years old, I won't spend with purpose. I want to be able to do service for others, service for our children in Martin County. I have ministries to...I visit people who are terminally ill, who are chronically ill, and I try to do a lot that makes a difference because my life was spared. I shouldn't be standing here right now. So I just want you to know that if given the opportunity, I will work hard for this county. I will work hard for this board and for the children of Martin County because I was born and raised here, I taught here, I know the children here, the demographics here, and I have a passion for it. So now I'll answer your questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nelson, for sharing that information. Again, we want to say thank you for your interest in Martin County Schools and for your interest in being a part of this board. I can tell you that this is a phenomenal group, and we just thank you for reaching out and for being interested in working for the children of Martin County Schools. Tonight, we just have a few questions for you. We're going to start with me, and we're going to just go around, and each Board Member's going to ask you a question. You may see us taking notes. That's just a process, what you're sharing. So I'll start with question number one. Why are you applying for the District 2 seat on the Martin County Schools Board of Education?
I think when Ms. Cardile mentioned to me that her seat was going to be vacant and she was asking me if I would be interested in taking her seat, I did a lot of thinking about it, a lot of praying about it. And I felt like it was a way that I could make a difference. I felt like it was something I wanted to get involved with. There are a lot of charter schools, private schools around, and we have a population in Robertsonville particularly of children who have been left out of all of that and who...some of them struggle academically, and that's the kind of child that I taught when I was in Martin County Schools. I taught in Hamilton, I taught in Robertsonville, and I have a passion for these children. There are some of these children that are diamonds in the rough, and I think we miss out on that sometimes if we aren't looking for that. And I want to do all that I can to provide opportunities for these children. I've seen it when I taught school. I've seen children that I taught come from nothing and go places. And I know that there are children there that can do that. I also realize that there are children there that may not be college material but may have other gifts and talents that they can use in careers. So I just want to see our community, our county, the economics in our county right now is...the economy in our county is hurting. We don't have the jobs that we used to have. And if we can produce children who are ready for the workforce, and I think that's what you all have been working on this year particularly and have done a great job at, we can offer them a way to make a living and not just feel hopeless when they get out of school and finish high school and have nowhere to go.
Thank you. We'll move on to Chairman Heath with question two.
All right, good evening, Ms. Nelson.
Good evening.
What is your opinion on the current state of schools in Martin County?
As I've been attending the last probably five or six meetings, I've been impressed with the things that are going on. I think you all are doing a wonderful job with programming and the way you're spending the monies that you have. I realize your budget's not what you'd like for it to be, but I think you all do a great job of using that budget effectively and getting around to the different schools and doing things that are very important. And, you know, I see the internship program, and I see the things that you did with the Exceptional Children's Program this year, the Odyssey of the Mines, the Innovation School. All of those things are assets and are really helping Martin County to achieve more. So I think there's been a lot done. I can see also that there are still things that need to be done because, you know what, if everything was perfect, all of our children would be scoring fours. So I can't say that everything's hunky-dory because I don't think any of us can say that. There's always room for improvement, but I think you all are doing a great job in the resources that you've put there for the children.
Good, thank you. Ms. Purvis.
Okay, Ms. Nelson, first, I just want to thank you for your resilience and your passion. My question is, what issues do you believe are most important to this district?
Well, our children are our future, so definitely the children are the most important thing in our district. And, you know, we're doing programming and things that we can do for them. I think...I think one of the things that seems to be a problem in the lower grades is behavior, consistent behavior, and because of that, I think...and I'm not blaming anybody for that. If a teacher has good routines, good classroom rules, and they're consistent with enforcing them, they have discipline. They have a room that has learners that are ready to learn. And some of our educators now are lateral entry. Some of them are not trained the way that I was trained or the way that teachers coming out of colleges are trained in that aspect. And so finding some way to enhance that through our administrators, through our superintendent with ideas that they have, what I'm finding, what I'm hearing from my district is that we have a problem retaining teachers, and we have a problem with teacher attendance. And I'm hearing this from the community. This is not coming from me. This is coming from the community. And when you don't retain teachers, and they don't see teachers coming back year after year, they know they're not important. They know that there's not a consistent bunch of people that have their best interests at heart. And I know that from experience as a teacher of children who come to school wanting more, but they don't exactly have the social skills to achieve it. And so I feel like if we can get teachers in there that are empowered to take care of those things and make sure that good routines, good classroom routines, good classroom schedules, you know, there's no wasted time, that transition times are good, those things can happen. Those things can happen. Teachers can get better, and those teachers that are lateral entry can get extra training in those things to give them the tools they need to help with that. And we have to believe in those children. And sometimes people coming in and spending one year don't have the buy-in, don't have the commitment. If they know they're one and done by Christmas, then those children know it. They sense it. They sense whether somebody's really committed to them. And I think that's a need in a lot of schools nationwide, not just Martin County. But, you know, I'm hearing from people that substitute, that it's difficult, and, you know, that's...it's something I think we need to work on. I think we're doing wonderful things academically, but if we can't get those things under control in some of our schools, the academics are not going to keep going up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baker.
Good evening, Ms. Nelson.
Good evening.
How have you been involved in the community?
In my community, and recently, I haven't been as involved as I have in the past. I went through some health problems for a little while. They're solved, and I'm doing fine. But in my community, I have served on boards. I have helped with the Policeman's Night Out where we gathered together school bags with supplies for children. I have done tutoring in schools before. I'm involved with Beta Oupsalon, my sorority, teacher sorority, that supplies books for libraries. We've given books to libraries in Martin County before. We give books to several different counties, but we also do that. I've been on boards in my town. I've been on the plant...excuse me. I just drew a blank. The zoning board. I'll get it right in a minute. I've been on the zoning board in Robertsonville before. And I also have done community work for my church. I've attended things that we have opened up to the community to get schoolchildren to come in, play days, you know, to get people involved in those things. So I've been involved in my community.
Thanks.
First of all, Ms. Nelson, I would like to say your passion for us just not to have, like, the best of the best students, but also the best of the best teachers and administrators, it comes across as remarkable, so thanks for that. What do you believe is the role of a school board member?
Well, a school board member has...first thing is, and this is the thing that I would have to remember as a school board member because I'm a teacher, is that you're not the administrator. You have to listen to administrators, and you have to listen to what they say and what recommendations they make. So we have to make decisions in hearings. We would have to decide on student assignments, expulsions, budget, disgruntled employees. You have to work with county commissioners on budget. You have to deal with parents in the community. You have to be an advocate for public schools. You have to get out there in the public where they can see you and talk to them and find out what their needs are, what they want, meet with groups. If they have PTA meetings, attend PTA meetings sometimes and just listen and see what they have to say. You have to keep up with facilities and make sure facilities are taken care of. You have to make a calendar for school. There's just so many different roles that a Board of Education member plays in serving their community. And you serve the whole of Martin County. You don't just serve your district. You serve all the children in the district, which is important.
What do you see as the most impressive challenge facing the district, and how would you address that?
Well, I think that probably the biggest thing that the district faces right now is finances. I would say that that's the main thing because you can't do anything without it. And if you want to improve and add things, you got to have money. And money's hard to come by, and the taxpayers, you know, are dwindling. Our population in Robertsonville has gone down from over 2,000 years ago until 1,600 now. That's a big drop. I haven't looked at the other areas of the county, but our county's population, I think, is decreasing. So...and we have a lot of children that are going to charter schools, which takes money out of our budget. So I think finances is probably the biggest thing. So to me, the things that you all have already started with the innovative campus, with the internships, with the things you want to do with learning skills, vocational things, I think those things are speaking to what the challenges are, and I think you all are doing a great job at that. I think making sure that we have children ready for the workforce when they leave school in case they are not college-bound, those are the challenges that are the greatest for us in Martin County right now because if we can put out there a good product for the workforce, then we can bring jobs in. If we bring jobs in, then our tax base goes up, and if our tax base goes up, we get more money in our budget. So I think all of those things are important.
Good evening, Ms. Nelson.
Good evening.
How would you work to encourage families and the community to ensure all voices are heard?
It's my desire to get out and talk to them personally, and that's what I plan to do. I am running in November, and I will get out in the community and talk to the people in the community. I'm going to try to set up some times to do that with different groups so that I can hear what it is that they're concerned about, what they want done, how they want to be heard. And it's important that we listen to those voices because they are the ones whose children are in our schools. And, you know, I'd like to give them that opportunity. I'd also like to visit the schools. I'd like to see what's going on in the schools. It's not a got-you moment. It's not a going out to find out what you're not doing moment. It's I'd like to listen to teachers. I'd like to listen to students say, you know, what they think about their school. And I'd like to speak with parents about that and see what it is that...how they feel about their school and what we need to do to help them feel better about their school or make them feel valued because parents need to be heard. And I think some parents don't know the right questions to ask. They don't know, you know, what to say. I know we have parents that can't even help children with homework because the math is so different now. I don't know if you've all seen the way they do math now, but I'm telling you, it's completely different from the way we did math. It's completely different from the way I taught math. They have so much extra work to do with it now that we didn't have to do. So a lot of parents don't know how to do that, and I think they feel bad that they don't know how to do that. Perhaps, you know, some parent-teacher nights, the teachers can do some things with them to help them with that. I don't know. But, yeah, I think we...I need to get out there and listen because I think that's what we all need to do is hear from them. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Nelson, this brings us to our last official question. Tell us your views on school choice.
Okay. And this is a political question, and I don't like politics, but I'll answer this question, and I'll answer it truthfully. I think that school choice can be good if it's done properly. I don't think it's been done as well as it should have been done. When you talk about nationwide, okay? Charter schools have taken a lot of children out of public schools, and my concern is those that are left behind. And so choice in our county is not so difficult anymore because a lot of our children have already joined with other schools, so that's not a big issue for me. I don't have a problem with a parent in a county choosing a school they want their child to go to to get what they need to get. As long as we don't forget those schools that have minorities, that have underprivileged children in them, I think we have to be very careful in how we move kids around and make sure that all children have an opportunity. I know you have a deadline for putting in, you know, your school choice. But I think not every parent understands that process. Some of them don't care about that process, and so their children don't have that opportunity. So what I say is, school choice can be a good thing, but we have to make sure that school choice doesn't leave specific groups of children left out of being able to attend in an area where they might would fit in just fine and excel if their parents really knew and understood the importance of using school choice because I don't feel like all parents really understand what that means.
Okay, Board Members, do you have any additional questions for Ms. Nelson? No? Chairman Heath, everyone is...doesn't...seems to not have any additional questions. Do you have any additional questions? Or shall we...
No ma'am, I do not.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we thank you, Ms. Nelson. We decided at our last board meeting that we are going to let this sit on the table until the August meeting, and we will vote at that meeting. And if the vote is in favor of your joining the board, you will be sworn in and take your seat that night.
Thank you, Chairman Heath.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Ms. Purvis.
Mr. Chair, I move the Martin County Board of Education enter closed session, subject to advice from the Attorney pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11A1 and A6, to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under General Statute 115C-319, and to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual. The Board would also... The Board would also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3, to consult with the Board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20U.S.C. 1232G and North Carolina Statute 115(c)(402). The Board will also go into closed session to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to go into closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Closed session granted.
Are we ready to move forward?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Alrighty. Need a motion to approve personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve personnel as presented in closed session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. And we need a motion to approve the closed session minutes and keep them closed.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the closed session minutes and to keep them closed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Thank you. Do we have any public comments tonight?
No, sir.
Thank you. Alrighty, our next board meeting will be August 5th. And if anybody has anything else they need to bring it up now, otherwise I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay. Got a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.